The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, November 21st, 2022. It's 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the pledge allegiance. If you'll please stand and Vice Chair Underwood will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice to have a full house. We haven't had that in a while, so welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. Our first order of business is a very special moment for the town of Plainville. We are going to be recognizing State Representative William Pettit Jr. Representative Pettit has[87.15][87.15](laughter) he has honorably served the town of Plainville up at the Capitol for three consecutive terms. And for that, for your time and dedication and certainly efforts toward Plainville, we couldn't be more proud and we certainly thank you for all of, all that you have done for us, Bill. It's truly an honor to have you up there. And I, I'm going to read a proclamation. We have a gift for you and then I'm going to ask you to come and say a few words. Okay? Does that work? All right. The proclamation for State Representative William A. Pettit Jr., whereas in November 2016, William A. Pettit Jr. won the seat for State Representative for the 22nd General Assembly District, which encompassed the town of Plainville and a portion of the city of New Britain. And whereas State Representative Pettit was officially sworn into office on January 4th, 2017, and continued to serve his hometown Plainville community for three consecutive terms. And whereas during his tenure, he served on several legislative committees and subcommittees, such as appropriation, education, energy and technology, and is a ranking member of the Public Health Committee. And whereas, he once again achieved a perfect score for votes taken on the floor of the House of Representatives during the 2022 legislative session. A remarkable accomplishment and testament to his dedication. That is rare indeed and we certainly appreciate that dedication to our town. And whereas, State Representative Pettit has worked continuously for the betterment of our community, proudly serving Plainville, New Britain, and the state of Connecticut as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Plainville Town Council, do hereby express our sincere appreciation to the Honorable William A. Pettit Jr. for his dedicated selfless service to the citizens of Plainville and wish him much success in future endeavors. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 21st day of November, 2022, signed by the Plainville Town Council, myself, David Underwood as Vice Chairman, Joseph Cottonzaro, Rosemary Maranti, Jacob Rocco, Deborah Tompkins, and Christopher Wazorko. I'm gonna have Rosemary bring you your proclamation, Bill. I don't want to fall down the stairs. I've already done that once the past couple of weeks, so (laughter).
Yeah? This is like my one job. Yeah, I know.
We also have a chair for you. I guess you've selected a rocking chair as a, as a thank you retiring from your post at the state. And my guess, my understanding is it'll be delivered to your home. So that's a, that's sort of what the chair looks like if you folks can see it in the front, except it'll be a nice rocker. You can just rock away.[301.14][301.14](laughter).
Lisa said I was old enough that I should pick the rocking chair.[307.52][307.52](laughter) But I, I thank you Chairman Puglisi and the council for this. It's been an honor to serve the people of Plainville. I thank you for your trust. I would be remiss without noting our current town manager's predecessor, Robert E. Lee. It was very easy to work with Robert and the council. Robert knew more about city and state government than I ever will. So he was a great, great resource to have, a good, good man to have on your side when I had complicated questions. But I, I look forward to continuing to work on a number of committees that I'm on in town with the Norton Trust and the Plainville Community Fund and CCRCC and a couple, couple others. And I hope that people can get behind Representative Cooley. And because I think we fiscal years 24 and 25 are going to be tough years for the state from a budget, budget point. But I thank the town for their support and would, would note, and I don't know if the chief is gonna do this note, that this, that they remembered Officer Holcomb today, some 45 years after his death, the ultimate sacrifice for people, the people of Plainville. So obviously our thoughts and prayers to the, to the family and that everyone stays safe, especially given current, recent events in Bristol and surrounding towns. So I, I know I'm not here for that reason, but because it just happened on this day, I thought I should make, make note of Officer Holcomb. So thank you again.[414.16][414.16](applause)
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for, I know how many hours and hours and hours of the day, the week and the year you dedicated to the state, certainly during budget deliberations, took you away from your family and other things such as golfing. So, yeah. So I'm wishing you the very best of health and enjoy your golf and enjoy your family. And we shall never forget the efforts that you put forth for our town. We sincerely do appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay. We're gonna move along through our agenda. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th, 2022 special and regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2022 special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements and reports tonight? Rosemary, is this your off week?
Uh, yes.[491.33][491.33](laughter)
I, I have to say that normally I would give a report about the senior center as that's my assignment. However, I had an accident and had a sprained foot and I was on crutches and I couldn't stand up and I was supposed to serve Thanksgiving dinners, so I took a pass. But I know that we do get updates from the senior center and our Assistant Town Manager is gonna give us the latest. So that, that's my non-report to you tonight. If there are no other announcements and reports tonight, I assume we'll move along. The first item under appointments and resignations is we have a new appointment in the police department. And I have to say, thanks for everybody coming tonight. This is very nice to see all these faces. Normally it's us and maybe a couple of other people, but it's wonderful to see everybody here. So thank you for coming. So what I would like is, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Roman Blajersky as Police Sergeant effective November 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Before we do vote on it, and we will vote on this, I'm going to ask our Chief, Christopher Vangeli, to step forward and give us a little background on our new soon-to-be Police Sergeant.
Thank you so much. The bad news is that once we're done with this, you're gonna lose the majority of your audience. So I apologize for that. It was a very happy occasion. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen enough. I'm very happy that I'm able to, to do a promotion within my, my first year. I know we had some very good officers. Officers with a lot of time on it had, had moved away from Plainville on to, to other, to other things, which gave me this opportunity. And, you know, after the, the recent testing process, you know, Roman, you know, to me stood out. And I really, it was a difficult decision for any, any boss to make, to choose between people that are all experienced and love their jobs and you know would do a good job. But Roman stood out for a number of reasons. I want to read a little bit about his background. Roman has 17 years with the Plainville Police Department. He previously served eight years as a reservist with the U.S. Army and is a combat veteran during Operation Iraqi Freedom. During his time with the Plainville Police Department, he has done a number of various assignments and responsibilities to include, he was a member of the Central Region Emergency Response Team, otherwise known as the Regional SWAT Team. He's a field training officer, which meant he had to train our new officers and show them how to do the job properly. He was assigned as the traffic officer. He was a member and is a member of the Accident Reconstruction Team, which is a very difficult job and he does it very well. He's a peer support officer, where he helps officers who might be struggling with the stresses of the job. And he's also the Police Union Vice President. He's a recipient of numerous commendations and awards, both while in the Army and as a police officer. Most importantly, he's married to his wife Carolyn. They have a five-year-old son, Cole, who is here. And I have to say on a, on a personal note, when I stood in this room for my appointment, you know, 10 months ago, Roman was here. He was one of the first Plainville officers I met, which I thought at the time, I was like, wow, he's a, he's an interesting character.[717.41][717.41](laughter) I wonder if all the Plainville police officers are like that. But he really impressed me with his positive attitude, how outgoing he was, and he just has a zest for life and for the job. I was very impressed with that. He enjoys the respect of his fellow officers and I believe he will be an excellent addition to our supervisory team. And I respectfully request that he be appointed Sergeant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. We have a motion and we have a second and we have heard about our soon-to-be Sergeant Blajersky. Did I say that right? Thank you. So last official notice we have to do is take a vote. So I will say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Great. Congratulations. We're very, very happy for you. I always say this, police officers and our firemen, and our firemen volunteer and stand up to do things that most of us would never think of doing, particularly police officers. This is, it continues to be a very, very difficult environment for police officers. I know that you work on holidays and nights and weekends and often away from your families. The town of Plainville depends on 24/7 service and we've never been disappointed. And we do honor you with that and thank you for what all of you do. You have a number of your colleagues here and you all do that for our town. But special congratulations to you, sir. And I know that you will, you'll be a leader. And we appreciate that you're here tonight with your family and friends and your fellow officers. So what I'd like to do is ask you if you'd like to come to the microphone and just say a few words. Okay. Just, just hit the little button so the red light goes on. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank my family and friends for their support. I wouldn't be here without them. I want to thank Chief Vangeli. I want to thank the town manager, Town Council for your support as well. Like I said, 17 years, been a long time. I'm excited for the, for the next chapter in my career. And with that being said, thank you all, the officers that showed up and sergeants. Chief Peterson as well, for his guidance throughout the years as well. So thank you, everybody.
Great. Thank you so much.[868.62][868.62](applause) And again, on behalf of the council, congratulations and wishing you a long and healthy career. We do appreciate your efforts. I'm going to actually take a little bit of a pause during this point in our meeting because perhaps your family and friends would like to leave. We have a long agenda ahead of us. You are very welcome to stay for all of it, of course. Oh, you have to do the swearing in. I'm sorry. We need to have you come back up and get sworn in. Sorry.[904.04][904.04](laughter)
Do you challenge that in support of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut, the laws and ordinances of the town of Plainville, obey the rules, regulations and orders of the police department, and that you will discharge the duties as one of Sergeant for the town of Plainville according to the best of your knowledge and ability?
I do. Thank you.
Okay.[929.62][929.62](applause) Now it's officially official.[932.91][932.91](applause)
You wanna like, I gotta work it again? I didn't want to stand up. I knew you were thinking, yeah, it was your costume. Yeah. That is the right. The other right hand.[948.45][948.45](laughter)
Oh, cute. Oh. Look at him. How cute. Yeah.
That's the photographer of the town.
Oh, look.
I understand it, but you really get it.
That's wonderful. How nice to have your family get your, your badge pinned on. Good work there. Good work.[1007.04][1007.04](laughter) All right. Again, if you'd like to take your leave, I'm just gonna take a pause during the meeting. So if your family and friends and I, I'm sure all the police officers want to stay, right? You're gonna all stay? No? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. We will, we'll resume our meeting. The next item on our appointments and resignations is we have an appointment for, some fire appointments to make and change. So item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to appoint John Smedilly, 134 West Main Street, Department 18, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Jonathan Camacho from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments tonight that may not be on the agenda? Nope? All right. No Board of Education report? So, Report of the Town Attorney. Do we have a report from the Town Attorney tonight?
Good evening. No, Madam Chair, we don't. We don't have anything to add to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for being with us.[1104.04][1104.04](laughter)
I'm here to answer questions or comment as asked to be, to be right.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Onto the Report of the Town Manager. We have a, we have a pretty lengthy report, so we're all gonna settle in and get ready for it.
Yes.[1124.54][1124.54](laughter) I will do my best to get through. This is a rather lengthy report with a number of items, so I'll do my best to get through it accurately. First item, number one, is a report on the Public Works Facility Evaluation and Conceptual Design. The original request for qualifications, RFQ, was a document that had a deadline back in March of this year. Two consultants were shortlisted from an initial interview process to complete a preliminary facility study for a new or renovated roadway facility. Weston and Sampson Consulting Engineers and Lorero Engineering were the two firms selected and shortlisted. So that was put on hold, given the, the town manager's transition, until I came in and recently we did a follow-up interview to talk with the consultant, really for, for my benefit coming, coming in to, to the, to the position and, and new to the project. So both consultants had an opportunity to expand upon why they were the most qualified to perform the task of developing the preliminary facility study. Both firms had qualified staff and previous experience to complete the task. But in my opinion, Lorero Engineering, having had more site-specific knowledge resulting from their ongoing landfill closure work, was deemed to be the best firm for, for the project in reference with other staff comments as well. So I'm, along with the Department of Technical Services, requesting the Town Council authorize the Town Manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Lorero Engineering to complete a preliminary facility study for a new or renovated roadway facility in the amount not to exceed $25,000. And there is an item under new business to make that award for Lorero Engineering not to exceed $25,000. Item number two is purchasing ordinance. And this is in reference to the work the Finance Department is doing and a note that came out of the Auditor's Report for the town to consider recognizing the federal code. So the town of Plainville is required to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR procurement standards under Section 200.317 through 200.327. Comparison of the CFR to the town's procurement policies as enumerated in Charter and the code ordinance was shared at last meeting. And I want to again thank Andy for the legwork that he did on that, presented the large document that was color-coded. We are boiling that down to and focusing on the CFR code and recognize and working with the Attorney's Office as well, that our policies and practices are aligned with CFR. In most cases, the items in red on the comparison chart are either standards that the town follows in practice but is not codified or standards that do not apply to the town. So in other words, we're incorporating the CFR procurement standards. We incorporate will not significantly change the town's existing purchase practices. And we have reviewed that with the Town Attorney's Office and we're recommending that Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances to add the new language under 106-11 Code of Federal Regulations Procurement Standards to achieve this compliance. And so this also is a, is an item under new business and that will have to set a public hearing date for December 5th in order to amend the ordinance. And in the packet, you'll see Andy had proposed the language and put together. It is highlighted in, in yellow, basically what we're asking to add under 106-11 for state and federal funds. Purchases involving projects approved or anticipated to be eligible for federal or state grants will conform to the specific requirements associated with the type of funding or grant. These requirements may include, but are not limited to, the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR Title II, Subtitle A, Chapter II, Part 200, Subpart D, Procurement Standards 200.317 through 200.327. That's the language we're suggesting be added to the ordinance and that will be put forth for a public hearing on December 5th. Next item, three, is the White Oak Redevelopment Project. Tigen Bond has recently completed a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, ESA, for the property located at 1 and 63 West Main Street in Plainville, Connecticut. The, in completing the ESA, they have identified additional areas of concern that require soil and possibly underground water, I'm sorry, groundwater assessment beyond those that were included in their existing agreement dated April 12th, 2022. The proposal includes additional costs for a ground penetrating radar survey to cover new locations, one additional day of soil borings, observation and subcontract costs included, one additional day of test pit observations and associated laboratory and analytical costs. Tigen Bond is quoting $16,800. They felt that the money spent for a clearer delineation on the front end will save the town and the state money on the back end with respect to remediation and abatement. There is an item under new business to approve Amendment Number Two and a full scope of work and rationale has been attached in your packet. Item number four, discussion regarding accessory apartments and parking requirements. This is, come through the planning and zoning and I know we have Mark DeVoe is here this evening. Should we, should we have any questions regarding two issues in terms of opting out? So on October 25th of this year, the Commission opted out of two requirements with the Public Act 21-29 that would require the town to, A, zone for detached accessory apartments in addition to the attached apartment to the town's current, that the town currently allows, and B, reduce parking requirements beyond what they felt was practical for the town of Plainville. Opt-out of Section 6 of the Act would otherwise require Plainville to permit detached standalone accessory apartments on all residential lots in Plainville. In doing so, the P&amp;Z noted that the unique nature and makeup of Plainville's smaller lot size is most, in most of the residential zones. They found that building setbacks and coverage requirements would largely restrict this type of unit in Plainville. In addition, they noted that each detached units were not, by virtue of language in the Act itself, considered to be affordable housing units and therefore would not increase the number of affordable housing units in Plainville. In addition, the Commission found that the existing regulations, which already permit attached accessory apartments, have proven to be successful in meeting the needs of our residents. Opt-out of Section 4, subsection D, subdivision D of the Act, in accordance with Section 5 of the same, would otherwise reduce the amount of parking spaces required for certain multifamily dwellings. In doing so, the P&amp;Z noted safety concerns and other matters of practicality, including the potential for two-car households in one-bedroom apartment units where the Act would require only one parking space per unit. There is an item under new business to issue an affirmation of the Commission's action and to do so, there is a two-thirds minimum vote needed by the council before January 1st, 2023. Otherwise, the Act will become law regardless of the prior P&amp;Z action. So that's, we certainly can get to that under new business. Should there be any question mark and delineate and explain, clarify those two items, the opt-out for the apartments and for the parking?
Can I ask a question and maybe either of you can answer it for me? So the planning and zoning is, has made these recommendations for us to, to go along with your guidelines. Is there, in your knowledge, any chance this could come back again to the town where the, if the state government wants this to actually happen, could they revisit this? Or once we opt out, we're out and we're, we're covered by anything else?
I think once we're off.
Is anything permanent about this?
There should be some level of.
Mark, could you, do you mind, just so the folks watching can hear your response?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark DeVoe, there should be some level of permanency to the, the action that you're taking. You know, I would note that states like Vermont have, in the legislative move, zoned accessory apartments as the law of the land. So there's really nothing stating that our legislature couldn't come back at some point in the future and say, well, we, we allowed you to opt out of this the last time, but guess what? It's, it's going to be law this time. The public act that was referenced did affect your planning and zoning regulations or the town's planning and zoning regulations on a lot of other fronts, without the ability to opt out. So the legislature is now dictating essentially what your zoning regulations can be. And just, it seems a lot, but in these two instances, they allowed this opt-out. The Commission felt it wise to do so. And so essentially this evening, they're just asking, asking you to go along with their, their recommendation, if you will.
Okay. It seems that certainly our, our, our government in Plainville, certainly our zoning boards certainly have a better handle on our community as to how we think it should be structured. And I know that sometimes orders come from way far above that really are not compatible with how a certain municipality may, may be operating. So I, I hope, I hope, I mean, I think the decisions that were recommended are good ones for Plainville because
We believe so.
we have a very dense popul, uh, density of housing. So it makes it much more difficult for some of these things to actually occur without creating a problem such as a. as I was reading through some of the material, it was noted that if there's only one car allowed, then what happens to the other car? And in the winter, we have a parking restriction for cars on the streets for snow plowing purposes, so it gets tricky.
As well as visitors. And in 2010, the Commission reviewed their parking requirements, actually lowered them then to help reduce impervious surface and, you know, just sort of stave off any potential flooding and try to, you know, lean in that direction. So they've already been looked at, and looked at well, I think. So I think we're in good shape.
So is the idea to create more density in population, more density in housing, is that why the parking thing is going to be happening?
Yeah, we believe that both of these, and many of the other recommendations, were born from a lobbying effort on the part of folks who would want to see additional density, more affordable housing. And there's nothing wrong with affordable housing.
Right.
Every community needs it, and there's a lack of it on all fronts. But I think that these edicts that are not necessarily one-size-fit-all just sort of didn't sit well with the Commission, and I think rightly so.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I'm the town council liaison for planning and zoning, so I sat in on a lot of those meetings and heard a lot of the discussion. So I definitely think the opt-out is, they made the right decision, and I fully support that.
Okay. And the Commission was unanimous in that?
Unanimous, yes.
Okay. Sure. Rosemary?
You know, I knew that some point in the past, we had looked at accessory apartments, and so I did look it up today. It was back in 2017. It was for portable ones-
Graniteland.
-that were healthcare-related.
Right.
Okay. And that wasn't opt-out, and that still stands?
That opt-out still stands. And at that point in time, the Commission did revise their regulations to permit an administrative process by which that person requiring a medical sort of, not supervision, but medical aid or assistance could essentially get an accessory apartment without having to go through the site plan.
Right. I remember you were going to, you were going to follow up with making it easier to get an attached-
Absolutely, that's what we did.
-for the healthcare reasons at that time. Yeah.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? All good? Okay. Thanks so much, Mark.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Next, item five, the Administrative and Technical Support for Program Income Housing Rehabilitation Program. The town recently advertised for professional and technical services required to provide administrative and technical support for our Small Cities Program Income Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program. Our previous agreement for these services expired, which is why the request for proposal was put together at this time. We received one response from A&amp;E Services Group LLC out of Cheshire, Connecticut. A&amp;E has been the consultant for our housing rehabilitation program for several years. They hold the certifications required by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing to perform these services. Their fee schedule is in line with the Department of Housing and deems acceptable, and the town has been very happy with the services to date. Staff and myself are recommending A&amp;E continue performing these services, and there's an item under New Business to authorize the town manager to enter into agreement with A&amp;E Services Group. So it's not, I'm told, not out of the ordinary that A&amp;E is one of very few players in the field, but they certainly know stranger to Plainville and provided great service that I'm aware of. I have not worked with them directly, but I understand that they've been in the field for over 32 years, as they explained in their letter, and that is in the packet as well. Item number six is the Utility Restoration Bid. On November 10, 2022, the Engineering Department received three bid proposals for utility restoration. The engineer had estimated $50,000. The lowest bid was $42,200, which was submitted from William M. Layden Construction of North Haven. The cost of construction activities will be paid from a permit restoration fee account, which such fees are collected when street opening permits are issued. The Engineering Department recommends the town council authorize the town manager to execute a contract with William M. Layden Construction, the amount of $42,200, to complete this specified construction activities upon the submission of proper insurance certificates and construction bonds. And this is an item that appear under New Business. And it's also, just a note, this is tied to your utility ordinance. As John explained to me, this is something new for me, but the utility ordinance speaks to the fact that the utilities perform the temporary patch, and it's the town that engages the services of a contractor to do the permanent patch on these roads. And John is certainly here and available to answer any questions you have with regard to the utility. But that is a budget-neutral item as well, so that is, permit fees are in to pay for that service that we provide in terms of making the permanent patch. Okay. Item seven, Technical Services Projects, the Northwest Drive roadway repairs, and also the reinstallation of the downtown decorative crosswalks. So in October, EverSource Gas had notified the department that they had scheduled a repair for the utility trench on Northwest Drive from Route 177, Unionville Avenue to the AmeriCole Building. The town had the opportunity to piggyback on this repair to address the deteriorated pavement section on Northwest Drive from Unionville Avenue to Cowles Road. So the town took advantage of that and would pay EverSource Contractor to repair the pavement surface outside the trench repair limits between Unionville Avenue and Cowles Road. And the cost of the repair work was $22,790. The price was compared to similar work completed under the bond program and deemed fair and reasonable. And under the town's purchasing ordinance, three price quotes were needed, but securing that quote was not practical under the timing and was not deemed in the best interest of the town to let this opportunity slip away. So we're asking the town to waive the requirement on the three price quotes needed to secure that service, and this is also an item, which will be item eight under New Business, to waive the requirement and ratify decision to award the repair work to Layden Industries of New Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $22,790. Connecticut DOT also recently, as you know, completed repaving of Route 372. This repaving eliminated the decorative crosswalks in the downtown area. The Engineering Department had been tasked to replace those. The decorative crosswalks are constructed of proprietary materials installed by an authorized sole provider. The cost of such work is estimated to be approximately $61,000. And again, under the town's purchasing ordinance, the project of this magnitude would need to be solicited sealed bids, but the practicality of soliciting sealed bids was impractical, and thus the town would need to consider approving, waiving the requirement of the sealed bid. And also, this is an item under New Business, to ratify the decision to award the paving of the crosswalk to Rocco A. Delora. I'm sorry. John, how do I pronounce that? Anybody care to get? Aina Rola? General Construction and Construction Company of Waterbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $61,000. Again, in the best interest of the town to take advantage of that opportunity. And again, a sole proprietor, would have been impractical to go out and look for somebody that would try to do similar work, or the quality of work that they've done in the past and were able to do for us there. So those two items are under New Business as well. Item eight, the High School Boiler Project. This is something the council is familiar with. The item has been on the agenda at the last meeting, and the High School Boiler Project specs were prepared in July and were advertised as a design-build project with a budget of $600,000. And even though this was issued as a bid, it likely should have been sent out as an RFP as the town was seeking a design-build proposal for a boiler system. And unlike a bid where there is a typical unit price and a selection is based on the lowest bid, the design-build takes some analysis to compare each proposal. The design-build strategy created a conflict within our purchasing ordinance with respect to the interpretation of the proposed proposal versus a bid. And so thus, it was determined by staff in consultation with the town attorney that the best course of action would be for the council to rescind the vote and to reject all bids, and to go, basically to repackage this and go back out and write a tighter spec with respect to our bidding procurement process. So this also is an item under New Business in which we would reject all the bids that we did at the previous meeting.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Mike, is that supposed to be Newtown, under that motion? Because it says Newton. Number 10.
Yep, I see it.
Should it be Newtown? I just want to get it right when the motion's made.
Yeah, Newtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that, yeah.
No problem. Yep, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
No, good catch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's under New Business. And item nine is the teacher's contract, and statutorily, that comes to the council and is not something I can comment on other than it is what is required. And I think the packet has, you have three options to accept, reject, or do nothing on that. But I was not involved, and that's not my, within my realm of discussion, so I'll just move on to item 10, which is Charter Revision. And so we've discussed this, and the council has been active in seeking the interests of residents to serve on the Charter Revision Commission, and has since received 14 applicants wishing to serve. In order to assist the council in this process, I've included an outline of the steps required for charter revision, along with a timeline, should you want to have the referendum question ready for the 2023 regular municipal election cycle. And I want to thank Cindy for her help on this, and also Mike and Jake's office for helping kind of piece it together. But as it stands, step one would be handled tonight under New Business to just initiate the formation of the commission by a two-thirds vote of the entire membership. And then step two can be scheduled for the December 5 meeting, in which you come back to appoint members consisting of between five and 15 electors, not more than one-third of whom may hold another public office, and not more than a bare majority of whom shall be members of any one political party. And the appointments must also be approved by a two-third vote of the entire membership. And under step two, you also have the ability to make recommendations or to give the Commission the charge of items that you'd like them to include. So you can do that in a two-step process tonight to form that, and that's under New Business, and then come back December 5 within 30 days to approve the appointments. Item 11 is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Again, I believe that the town has done this for a few years. The grant covers a portion of personnel of the Fire Marshal who serves as the Emergency Management Director, the AMD. There's an annual application process, and a deadline for submission is December 1, 2022. And there's an item under New Business to approve and authorize the town manager to submit the application for funding. So that's what I have thus far. Next item is the fun stuff, the dashboard and the color-coded spreadsheets here for you. I hope everybody had a chance to go through that, and I'll take us through briefly, because I think you'll see the trend is favorable for us. If we start with, these are expenditures, and our dashboard is also up on the website as well. But these are expenditures and a snapshot through October 31 of this year. So right up top, the town budget in total, expenditures percentage 37.97%, which is just under the two-year average of 38.74% total. The general government budget, if you look on the left there, the little box through October 31, is trending slightly over the two-year average at 47.47% versus the two-year average of 46.77%, so a slight increase there, about a little more than half a percentage there, but not alarming. As I talked with Rob Buden about that, just getting a feel for, I think it might have been just that difference, I think he said, in debt service and the timing of debt service, that nothing to be alarmed about, it's just running, almost in line, but just a little bit above at this point. On the other side, the Board of Ed's budget is running just slightly under the two-year average. They have spent 32.27%, and their two-year average is 33.93%. So just running under there. On the yellow box, the police overtime, again, another good trend. They're through October 31, have spent $139,358. Their two-year average is $204,503, so they are tracking under their two-year average. Their percentage spent is 25.34%, and that's, we're now over, we're into the fourth month, so less than a quarter there, so they're tracking well at this point. Roadways overtime, also through October 31, is trending lower than the two-year average. They've spent $5,368 to the two-year average of $21,581, so significantly under there. They've only spent a percentage, that's 6.98%, so under 7% there. The Buildings and Grounds overtime is tracking closer to the two-year average. They've spent $9,688. Their two-year average is $10,743, so slightly under, and percentage spent is 37.81%. Nothing to report or recorded, submitted for roadways for their snow OT or the building grounds snow overtime, so I would expect that that would be changing the next time I report out, potentially, depending on where that snow season takes us. On the right, we have some stats on the hauling tonnages for municipal solid waste. Also, good trend line there as well. Through October 31, 1,953.59 tons, under the two-year average of 2,226.34, so a difference of 272 tons, so that's a good trend as well. And the same is happening with recycling, that the trend is lower than the two-year average, recycling tonnage of 438.77 with a two-year average of 496.73. So in both cases of the municipal solid waste and recycling, both are under the two-year average. So far, so good. We hope that trend continues. Next page, in terms of revenues. We have all revenue reported through October 31 as $33,487,593. And so we've received, percentage-wise, 50%, 50.98%, so we're trending actually higher than the two-year average at 48.62%, which is good. And I'm not sure what exactly, other than timing with respect to that, but that's good news. Revenues are coming in. Current taxes are also trending higher there. Percentage received is 59.23%. The two-year average is 58.52, so that is right in line and actually riding a little bit higher. average is 58.52. So that is right in line and actually riding a little bit higher in terms of actual collected. The unassigned fund balance, unaudited numbers have not changed since the last report, still pending the auditors, which will be arriving next week, I believe. So those numbers stand the same, no changes there and would be, you know, what appears to be a very healthy fund balance. So good news there. Special funds, the recreation fund, both the expenditures and revenue, nothing to report, no activity. Those numbers are the same month over, well, report over report from last report, no activity, no changes. Robertson Airport, got to go to my notes. They have got, if you'll notice on Robertson Airport, you look, expenditures are in line, but the, if you look, a very large number looks deceiving on the right for the airport revenues through October 31, 297,408,000. That's 240% collected or revenue. That note is simply the fact that the council approved the ARP of funds of 250 and was booked as a revenue. So it skews that number to 297 where the previous number was 25,000 in terms of revenue. And I think that number is tracking from what I saw in Rob. And I just wanted to explain why that number looks so large there on that side. Water pollution control authority budget expenditures also running high. I explained that at the last meeting with respect to the timing of purchases they made on the front end this year. So that's probably going to take some time before you see that level out. There's nothing that is concerning there when I spoke with Joe and Rob about that. And their budget revenues are tracking slightly less than the two-year average at 1.57%. The two-year average is 2.08%. And the rationale there or the explanation there in running slightly lower is the fact that they've got revenue loss with respect to the market, I believe, is what Rob had explained. So they are, that's why they are under. And the Plainville Library, the last one, budget expenditures are running slightly lower than the two-year average at 35.97%. The two-year average is 40.12%. So they're in line and actually running under, which is good. Their fund revenues through 31, 340,480. And I will make a note there to explain the percentage received represents 47.04%. The two-year average is 23.38%. And the difference there is that timing of the transfer of funding. So essentially, 170,000 is typically booked once, but the timing in terms of the reporting, you have a double there. So the 170 times two is the 340. So it's just, it was just a timing issue in terms of recording. So there's nothing out of the ordinary with that. It's tracking right on the numbers for that fund as well. But it looks, just because of the timing, it skewed that number as well.
Michael, before we move on to our next section, I have a question regarding the special funds, particularly the recreation budget for their expenditures. The percent spent this year is 55.83% of the total and the two-year average is 27.41%. That's almost double of the two-year average. Is there something that occurred unusually in the recreation department that would make that much higher than what it normally is?
Yeah, I think it's still, I think it's still a reflection of the fact that the COVID years had skewed the two-year average.
Oh, okay, okay. That makes sense. That makes some sense. Now, if the COVID is still factored in there, then that would do that. Okay.
Yeah, again, for their activities and so forth.
Oh, all right, sure. Okay, thank you. That just looked a little odd to me.
Yeah, oh, yeah, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So yeah, so then the major projects report, the road bonds moving along, 74.21% complete. And that is a $10 million project, revenue to date of 5,597,479, expenditures to date 7,893,476 with a project balance of 2,743,429. The Wheeler School project, 23,515, $23,515,000 project, revenue to date 10,964,65, expenditures of 20,796, sorry, 20,976,904. Project balance 2,538,96 with percentage complete of 89.21% complete. And I believe that the state there is holding back on the reimbursement until they close out the project. But essentially, the Wheeler School project is done. It's just the accounting for that project that's going to lag. And I'm not sure, I wish I could tell you, I'm not sure the timeframe on when those funds and reimbursement will be done. I can check with Rob to see just if he's got a feel for where that is.
I had asked Rob about the Wheeler School project and we haven't gotten the final payment from the state, nor do we have the final percentage of reimbursement from them. So we don't know how long that will take, do we? Is it like anybody's guess as to how long that's going to take? I think we're, there's like $3.5 million that we should be also getting back on that in order for us to get the assumed reimbursement, but we do not know when that will happen. Is that right?
I don't. I wish I had an answer, but we can circle back with Rob and push this data. It's just, I think that just from what people read and hear, that the state and the office there has gone through so much in terms of turmoil. And we'll put the phone calls in and hopefully we can push to see if we got an answer. Somebody's got to be assigned to it and working on it and can tell us.
But all the documents have been sent up to the state. Everything's been submitted. All the items have been checked off and closed out as far as we know.
That's my impression, yeah, that there's nothing that they're waiting on us for. I could double check with Rob on that to make sure, but I think they have everything they need.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The next is the turf maintenance fund project, and I don't really have much to say on that. I don't have the information or notes on that project other than we continue to have a project fund balance there that I presume is there as a sinking fund for the turf in terms of future maintenance that we need. And ARPA is actually, you know, ongoing and active, that we have 5,189,198. Revenue to date 3,486,311. Expenditures to date of 2,010,826 and a project balance of 3,178,372. So we're 38.75% complete. So there are more in the pipeline. And again, the notes there that we've got, funds must be spent by December 31, 2026 and obligated by December 31, 2024. So I'd like to keep that note in there so we don't lose sight of that and continue to move the projects through the pipeline. And last is Town Line Road Reconstruction is 92.3% complete. And I think they're, John, is there, that should be coming to close soon?
There's one item.
Yeah, thank you, John, if you wouldn't mind coming forward.
There's one item, piece of equipment that we're waiting on, that should be installed within the next week or so. And the project is complete. So with the exception of retainage, which is 5% of the total project costs, there should be a surplus. We should be, we came under budget in that particular project. But it's done. The only thing we're waiting on is the radar, radar speed signs. And there was a production issue related to supply. And if you drove on the road, you could see the two poles are up. It's just a matter of strapping the equipment to it.
Thanks. Any questions for John? Nope, thank you, John. Okay.
And that's it for the dashboard.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next is Happenings.
Happenings. Andy?
Sure, thanks, Mike. So I'd just like to provide a brief update on leaf collection. So leaf collection in Plainville has entered into its fourth week, and I know Mike has sent emails to the town council and we've tried to communicate with residents as well, updates on this. So this year is a little unique due to drought conditions this past summer. Trees are stressed and leaves are falling off of the trees in larger volumes than in previous years. So the roadways department is working diligently to pick up leaves throughout the town. And over this past weekend, they logged their 317th load over to the compost piles. The crew completed their first round of leaf collection in town, and they started their second round this week. And last time, just to give you some context, last time this year, roadways was in their fourth round of leaf collection and only had 252 loads logged. So this year, even though the crew is three days ahead of schedule than they were last year, they are only on their second round, again, due to the heavy volume of leaves that have fallen. So we've been getting some emails and we just want to reassure you folks and the residents that they're out there, they're working hard, and there hasn't been too many weather events that have prohibited them from picking up leaves. So they will continue to do so from now until early December, again, weather permitting, but they're on their second round. So everyone should have been visited already and will hopefully be visited from now until next week and the week after. In regards to Pumpkinfest, Plainville Pumpkinfest donated $10,000 to the Plainville Community Fund. This is for the second year in a row. In total, Pumpkinfest has donated a total of $52,500 to the community fund. From the revenue collector, the 2023 tax sewer bills have been mailed to residents. The last day to pay is Thursday, December 1, 2022. Taxpayers have two payment options. The first is to pay the whole amount in December of 2022, or residents can pay in two installments, one in December of 2022 and the other in May of 2023. Please note, though, that the town does not send out second bills. So this is the only bill residents will receive. On a separate note, under the revenue office, revenue collector's office, the second installment of real estate and personal property bills are due in January of 2023. From the senior center, and for any information regarding the senior center, residents can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first event, Veterans Social Hour, will be occurring tomorrow, November 22 at 10:00 a.m. These are monthly informational and support meetings. They are conducted by the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services, Chery Voe. And this event is for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. On Thursday, December 15, from 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m., the senior center will be hosting AARP Smart Driver classes. This is a $20 cost for AARP members and $25 for non-AARP members. The class teaches valuable defensive driving strategies and provides a refresher of the rules on the road. And you may qualify for an auto insurance discount by completing the course. COVID-19 vaccine/booster shot clinic is open to the public. This is on Monday, December 12, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Griffin Health will be conducting free COVID vaccines and boosters at the Plainville Senior Center. You can make an appointment or walk in. Walk-ins are welcome. An empty seat at the table getting through the holidays, an event on Thursday, December 8 at 10:00 a.m. If the holidays are difficult this year because there's an empty seat at the table, join Bill Pilkington, Supervisor of Pastoral and Briefment Services at Hartford Healthcare at Home, as he discusses the challenges that holidays can bring. Learn ways to provide solace and healing and share ideas and establish new traditions. And the last event is Let It Snow, Painted Lamp Shades for Decorative Wineglass Candle Holder. It's a crafting class. It's a two-session class on Friday, December 9 and Friday, December 16, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The cost is $12 for senior center members, and that includes all supplies for the project. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael and Andy, for your reports. At this time, I'll ask, do any of council members have any questions or comments regarding either of the reports that we got tonight? Good job then. Thank you both. Okay, that was a long one, so we appreciate all the time and energy you put into that. All right. Next item on our agenda is our public comment section during this time. We invite the public to come and speak to the council. We have one podium with a mic. Please, when you come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak? Mr. Kislak?
John Kislak, 65 Forestville Avenue. I won't offer a prayer tonight, but I want this council to know that I'm always thinking about you and praying for you every day to be able to handle your duties and responsibilities to the town, and I appreciate it. The other thing, I reached out to three council people, Tompkins, Underwood, and Wazurko about an issue I had, and all three of them responded to me. And I really appreciate it because you set me straight on an issue that I have and it's been solved. So really appreciate you getting back to me. On our website, have openings for six appointments on commissions. But this council has been missing probably one of the most commissioned appointments. And it's not just now, it's been for a lot of years. We do not have an ethics commission. And that's a violation of the charter. I'm not blaming this council because it's been like this for years. So I want to read some things from our charter. Chapter 5, Section 7, Ethics Commission. There shall be a municipal ethics commission. The members shall be appointed by the town council. And if you go into Chapter 29, Ethics Code of, 29-1, Purpose. The proper operation of a democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to the people. That governmental decisions and policies be made free from undue influence and in the proper channels of governmental structure. 29-3, Ethics Commission. The town of Plainville hereby establishes a municipal ethics commission consisting of five members. The members shall be appointed by the town council. Now, this, the requirements for this commission are, from what I see, almost impossible. I know I never, I would never be able to be one just by a couple of the regulations. It's so tough. And then they have ethics for them. Now, since we're talking about charter revision, maybe this could be looked at as part of it, that it can either be eliminated because we haven't been able to fill it with our regulations, or modify it. So that's just a thought with charter revision coming up. And there's one other thing that I would like to see in there that was taken out. I know in the 1990s, Chapter 2, Section 7, we had a recall of elected officials statute in there. I know Bristol's looking at it now, but I was wondering why that was ever taken out. And that's something that I'd like to ask Charter Revision Commission to look at, too. Now, it's, you gonna give me a couple?
Your time has expired, but I'll allow you to go for a bit longer. You asked me if you could have a little more time, so.
The other thing I want to, it's not so much for you people, but everybody who might be listening, that we have an organizational chart in this town for our government. It's that the public, the people, the town council... It's the public, the people, the town council next, and then the town manager. I just wanted to bring that up. Maybe people watching this don't know about that. But I thought it's important for people to know how our government runs and how it's controlled. The other thing, when we have public hearings, I realize that the council is well-versed on the topics and, you know, everything about it. There's a lot of times I see what's going to be recommended, but I still like to have an opinion on that, even if it's in favor with you. So I just want to let you know that sometimes if this council is doing something that I completely agree with, I would like to talk about it, too. So I just, so you understand that about me. Now, I talked to the town manager about this. When I send an email to the council, or like I call Lisa and ask her to have certain councilmen call me, the town manager has enough on his plate. I would like to have Lisa be able to send an email directly to the council members so it doesn't get lost in a shuffle. If that's okay with this council, if we can work on that.
That would be something we'd have to discuss. It does come in through a server, and the council does not have access to that email. So we'd have to take that under discussion.
Okay. But I'd appreciate it if you would.
Okay. Are you almost done?
Almost done.
Because we have another, we have somebody else here that would like to make some comments, so.
Yeah, this that I want to give to the council.
Okay.
It's about the Conservation Commission. I'm coming to you as the last people because you approved the appointment. We have this person, Lisa Lozier, who is, as far as commission, conservation laws and rules and the health and safety of Pottery Ruski Park Pond is so far out in left field that she might be playing a new ballgame somewhere else. She wanted to ban fishing. And I guess I met with Robert Lee on this one. Robert straightened her out that we're not banning fishing. I know he's not the town manager anymore. She actually wanted to ban the banding of geese, which is federal and state conservation practices. We should talk to Mark DeVoe about some of her antics when he's at the Conservation Commission meeting. But I'd like this town council to look into it and do something about this person because she is so far off the wall with the things she does. Maybe next meeting I'll expand more on what this person's doing.
In light that she is not here to answer some of the allegations, I think it's, we should just not go too far with that, John.
You have what she wrote up?
I have, and we will look at it.
Okay, appreciate it.
We will look at it.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. The first one is, you mentioned a part of the bullets by the town manager was charter revision discussions. If there's any charter revision changes, there will be a public hearing, right?
Oh, yes, yes, that's required.
This is just the previews of coming attractions, and then it comes to a public.
Once the commission does its work and then it comes to the council, there has to be a public hearing, and yes, that is required.
Thank you. The second thing is, I had asked for this information the last meeting over a month ago. And I've heard nothing from the school.
I think you need to talk to the superintendent about that.
I have to talk to the superintendent?
Yes, sir.
The town council cannot help me with that. This is the same school board that's coming here, asking to the town for money. Yet the people that pay the taxes for the school cannot ask a question.
Okay. Because you're requesting the information, it would make sense to me that you would contact the superintendent of schools to find out where he is with that. However, if you think this is something the council needs to take on, we can certainly do that and follow up on it. Yes, Mike?
Madam Chair, yes. We actually did work with the Board of Ed, compiled that in your format. Andy emailed it to you, but apparently it hasn't gotten to you. We would certainly be happy to provide you with a written copy of that or printed copy of that.
Oh, in my format?
Yeah, in your format.
Oh, thank you very much.
Andy went to the trouble of taking yours and submitting that format that you requested.
Thank you so much.
So we have a printout for you and probably even at the end of the meeting.
Well, I'll be glad to come down to the town hall and pick it up instead of you having to put extra work into it.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah. So I just, we assumed that the email didn't bounce back, that it went through to you, so.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the time.
We'll have to check your email. Maybe you got caught in your spam filters or something, I don't know. But we have it for you. We'll get you a hard copy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see, what you call it. Oh, is this, this is just a curiosity question. The Wheeler School Project on here says 89% complete. That isn't the building, that's just the finances. Okay, the building is totally completed.
To my knowledge, it is. Maybe, there may be some paperwork or things that need to get that to 100, but the building has been open for a couple of years.
That's what I, okay, but again, the actual structure is completed. This is a financial problem.
It's paperwork.
Okay, and the, let's see, speeding. Completed, I asked for that. Well, I just, just got a little bit of comedy out of this. At the last meeting I had talked about, I was kind of confused with the school systems. Every time they talk around, they talk, they need a boiler. And I had mentioned the middle schools, and I was corrected. I think the problem is, we need a high school boiler.
Oh.
So I'm asking the same question again. Are our schools falling apart?
Honestly, I'm not sure falling apart is the right word to use. Certainly in the middle school, all of the schools in our town have been renovated over the past, I'm going to make a guess, 15 to 20 years. And the middle school is 30 years old, so it's not falling apart, per se. But it's eligible for a renovate-like-new status right now.
And just a personal thing, one of the curious, the offshoot, and this is my last question. One of the offshoots is, everything has to be, when we go into, example, let's say we're going to go into middle school. It's not to rectify this or rectify that. The initial statement is always is, build as new.
Renovate as new.
It's not, let's fix five rooms over here or four rooms over there. It's build as new. And with the cost of living nowadays, that's money. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
Now, the other side may conclude by saying, I think our school systems are excellent. Plainville's school system, so I'm not pointing at them, I'm just pointing at the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything that they'd wish to share with the council before we close our Public Comment section? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments, and I will close the Public Comment section. We have no old business, so we'll move on to our new business section. We have a number of motions, so item number one.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award RFQ 2022-18 Public Works Facility Evaluation and Conceptual Design to Larrero Engineering Associates Incorporated, Plainville, Connecticut, and authorize the town manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, December 5th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center regarding proposed amendments to General Code, Chapter 106, Purchasing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, please.
Motion, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute Amendment Number Two to the Agreement for Environmental Assessment Services at 1 and 63 West Main Street with tie and bond in the amount not to exceed $16,800.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd just like to reiterate, as we saw in the documentation that we received, that the Brownfields grant is going to be paying for this.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's like an important point for public information.
It'll come out of that grant that we're getting from the state. Yep.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Number four?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify for planning and zoning commission motion to opt out of Public Act 21-29, Section 6, requiring the additional, the addition of detached accessory apartments to the current local regulation that permits attached accessory apartments.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify the planning and zoning commissions motion to opt out of Public Act 21-29, Section 4D, nigh, reduction of required parking for certain residential uses.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Number six, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award R E P 2023-08 Administrative and Technical Support for Program Income Housing Rehabilitation Program to A&amp;E Services Group, Chester, Connecticut, for the purpose, for the proposed fee schedule.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-09E Utility Restoration to William M. Leyden Construction, North Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $42,200.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify waiving the bid process and award bid number 2023-10E Northwest Drive Roadway repairs to Leyden Industries, New Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $22,790.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify waiving the bid process and award bid 2023-11E reinstillation of downtown decorative crosswalks to Rocco Adarola General Contracting Company, Waterbury, Connecticut, in the amount of $61,000.
Second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 10.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to rescind the award of bid number 2023-01 Design-Built High School Boiler Project to McKinney Mechanical, Newtown, Connecticut, in the amount of $698,000, and reject all bids received.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, number 11 has to do with the agreement between Board of Education and Town of Plainville. I'd like to take no action tonight on number 11.
Second that.
Okay, just, that's fine. And I have a second for, to take the no action option. Is that what you wish to do?
Yes.
Everybody?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That would not have been my choice.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all right.
You know, I would definitely have favored approval of the agreement. I think it was negotiated in good faith. I think it's a sound contract. I think districts are competing for teachers. I think it's a business decision as well. And I believe that we should go forward approving that.
Okay. Just a little background information. I was involved, or actually, I was present for the negotiation between the Plainville Teachers Union and the administration. And I have to say, it was a very lengthy negotiation. And we did, at one point, we went through, through a mediator to try and resolve the issues. The mediation is what you do when there can't be an agreement. And the next step, if the mediator and the parties can't agree, is it would go to arbitration. And then, at that point, it becomes lengthy. It becomes expensive to have an arbitration award. Just to give you some background, because I'm under some of those protections of being in a negotiation, I can't share with you everything that was said, and I can't share with you all the back and forth of it. But the administration worked very hard to negotiate this contract with the teachers' union. And it was, I can say, difficult for a lot of reasons. But they did bring in a mediator, that didn't work. And ultimately, the two groups came to agree on what was being presented tonight in our packet. I'm sure you've all read the entire contract, right?
I have.
Yep. And just to break it down, the contract for three years totals 11.5% salary and step increases. So that's not what they'll get every year, but that's over the course of three years. It's one of the larger contracts that I've ever seen in terms of some of the contracts that have been awarded. The thought process is, there are towns that are going through arbitration, and this is where some of those numbers are falling. So it seems to be, those are not untypical of other schools, teacher awards, teacher contracts that are out there. And they are being awarded after going through all the mediation and arbitration, those numbers. So it's a different world out there right now. Things are very, very different. It's a large contract, but the administration did the best they could to try and deliver. They want to keep their teachers, they value their teachers, they value what the teachers do. But they are very much aware of the cost of this and the impact it will have on their upcoming budget. You'll see it once we get the budget request. You'll see the change in it. So I just wanted to recommend, I just wanted to let you know that it was an interesting process this time around. It's usually not like that, but this one was, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, obviously, the end result will be the same. The contract will go into effect.
It will.
If we take no action.
It will.
Okay, but I will still stand my position that I feel that we should go forward and approve it.
And approve it.
And prove it instead of taking no action, which brings the same effect. But I think sends a very mixed message.
Okay.
I will not vote for this motion for that.
Okay, that's fine. So just to get the motion correct, the motion made was to take no action, correct? Rosa Mary, do you want to make a motion to approve it and then have it, see where it shakes out? And then we'll?
Well, I'm not sure from parliamentary procedure if the...
I don't think we can do it.
If you have to.
All right, so your motion is one table? All right, okay. All right, so all those in favor of item number C, to take no action on the contract? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed? No. Nay.
One nay. Okay, thank you. Item number 12, please.
Madam Chair, motion to initiate a charter revision and with the next 30 days, establish the charge and charter revision commission membership.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, please.
Motion to adopt a resolution regarding Emergency Management Performance Grant application for federal fiscal year 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 14.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to postpone number 14 into our next meeting.
Okay. Second. May I have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 15.
Motion to approve tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let me get back to my other papers here. Okay, that takes care of all of our business that we had to do. Item number 12 is Other Discussions of Interest. And there is an item under here with Boards and Commission openings, Michael?
Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity just to make a plug for the community in terms of getting involved and participating. I prefer not to see any of the boards and commissions fall short of a quorum and having to delay meetings. And so just making a plug that anyone interested can go to our town website. And along the top banner, you see the Town Government tab. Hit that tab, go down three spots to Government, to select and apply for Board or Commission. It's the third one down. And then it comes to a page that says Boards and Commissions, Getting Involved. And it kind of, it basically walks you through the steps that you need to take and explains that you need to be a resident of Plainville, be a registered voter, and if applicable, meet the requirements listed in the description for the Board or Commission that you're interested in applying for. So like, for instance, I think the Economic Development Agency has a certain, you know, that you be involved in or are affiliated with business or have some business background and so forth.